States of America and two republics which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone have any conditions, corrections to the agenda? I would prefer that we skip supervisor's committee meeting updates and things so we can move right into the chair. Things. I have a motion to approve agenda minutes.
Any maker license?
And thirteen.
I make a motion to approve the agenda minutes from the November twelfth and thirteenth of twenty twenty four.
I will second that motion.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda in minutes from November twelfth and thirteenth. On November twenty twenty four. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Recorder is ready is what we generally get in here the first of the month. I think this got kind of put on by mistake. Do you have anything to add to it?
No, Vicky.
Can we just omit that?
We'll miss it.
Okay.
Oh, actually.
And then there's no deferred license, we cross that out. Okay.
Well, I think we already did there. Office now have a new sheriff of Mill County.
Yay, congratulations. We've been counting the days.
I'm happy to hear that.
Thanks.
Okay, first on our agenda is to approve the appointment of chief deputy.
I wonder if the most prestigious partner would be.
Take your own.
So what are you gonna do?
I'd like to appoint Josh England, chief deputy.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Josh England, the chief deputy.
Tell me more, does he start tomorrow, next week?
Today.
Today.
Yeah, he's unemployed right now.
You know what? Let's just make him.
You know what, I think that's the exact same thing I said this morning, I'm going to my first opportunity to put the.
Josh, we'll, we'll make our decision next week.
I don't mind.
Yes, you do.
And obviously, a couple things, um, it'd be eighty-five percent of my salary, which is, um, by how long? Then obviously, it would also be cruel of all of his leave that we had, get into hold, uh, last year and he stepped up and took the interim job. Get all that back.
Okay, so just say in the letter.
Well, I have a resolution for the pay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So did you put in the letter what he will be making?
Yes. It'll be a, sorry.
I understand.
Uh, eighty-seven, five fifty.
Five fifty.
Do you, do you need a copy of that, Matt?
I do not, I don't thank you.
So Josh has done such a wonderful job and we thank you for stepping in because we know he had a lot of challenges ahead of him.
I appreciate it.
Wonderful job, so thank you, Josh. So with that, I second the motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of, uh, chief deputy Josh England. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Tell Justin I tried, Amber.
I will, I need to take the shirt because I don't get the shirt. Even though it's perfect. Thank you.
You guys are making me nervous, there is a chair.
And I'd love to say that I'm gonna have anything to say about this, but.
Oh, okay.
I really don't.
Okay.
So I'll step out of the way.
Have a chair, Josh.
Uh, I can't sit.
Oh, you can't sit.
Good.
Generator.
Uh, generator, um, through Cummins, it sounds like all county offices were on a pay as we go.
Well, that's what we're trying to get so they make one trip to come down and get one.
Yeah, we're dealing with a contract.
Right.
They sent us the contract for full years, uh, inspection and everything else, proposed amount comes out to three thousand one hundred ninety-six and fifty-six cents.
What year?
Three-year term.
Three-year.
Three-year term.
Three thousand what now?
Three thousand one nine six point five six.
Gotta get that fifty-six cents.
Absolutely.
The thirty-one ninety-six fifty, though, is a yearly representative.
Uh, that's the total.
The total, okay.
The total for three years.
Oh, great, okay.
Cause it averaged, I think, four hundreds and change every time they came out, because that was our bill, every time they'd come out, they'd just give us a one-time bill.
Okay.
You add it all up to cheaper, they knew the contract.
Absolutely.
So do they have a list of what they're all planning on doing when they? I mean, I don't want them to say, oh, this wasn't in the contracts or whatever.
They do have planned, uh, equipment, inspection, full service, and I can leave all this with Amber, but, uh, I mean, uh, we've already signed it, we just need Cummins, we'll have to send it off for their signature, and if we can get you a copy.
Perfect.
That's a very good one.
I make a motion to approve the generator contract of Cummins, and that's out of Omaha, correct, Josh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, it's a three-year contract for three thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents. And there's a list of inspections that they will be doing, so, um, this will be great.
Second motion.
The motion made and seconded to approve, uh, Cummins out of Omaha as a generator contractor. A three-year contract is being made of an amount of three thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there any further discussion, concerns from anyone? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Vehicle. Uh, we have our old Chevy Silverado, I think at one point, uh, you guys had already given us permission to auctioned it off. Uh, Matt reached out, they were looking for a vehicle.
Yes. That's why I asked if they ran or if you drove one or something like that.
Well, it is boots of old truck. So, uh, but with that, uh, I know he had offered to buy it, but I don't see any reason to take money out of general funds, put money back in the general funds. It's already a county-owned vehicle, uh, my thought.
I mean, is it safe or bad to drive?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean.
I, it, it's not gonna be driven like a cop car, so it'd be just.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing I'll have to do is it's being tripped out right now. Uh, when it comes back, they'll just have to pay to get the stickers put off and whatever stickers they wanna put on it. That's kind of my thoughts, and if Matt's on board with it, that way county doesn't have to buy a vehicle, I mean, it's already a county-owned vehicle.
Love that idea. So is that hard to switch from one department to another department?
Focus wheel.
Yeah, the county, county already owns it, so.
Yeah.
They can just take the keys and start driving.
I think the motion to approve the transfer of the county vehicle from the sheriff's department to the zoning department.
The motion made and seconded, transfer a vehicle from the sheriff's department to the planning and zoning department. Are there any questions, concerns from anyone?
And this will be used, just, it's gonna be used for the environmental health inspector when he's out doing the step technical checks and all that. Just repeat so much mileage out, it makes way more sense of it's a kind of vehicle form to utilize during work hours.
Yeah, because mileage gets expensive.
It does.
Cause what is, uh, the federal, uh, quote, sixty?
Seven?
Sixty-seven. So it's going up there.
It adds up.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Josh, this is a great idea.
No sense in trying to buy one, have one, we're gonna sell anyway.
Right.
I would agree.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of, uh.
Steve Allen's gun's out of the creek.
Approval of a resolution twenty-four day forty for Josh England, says leave bank, when'd you leave? And you got, you got a pile of money in there or what?
We discussed this earlier, uh, through the process, so I work like we're all aware of it, I would make the motion to approve the resolution twenty-four forty to reinstate Josh's leave bank.
Twenty-four forty, so does that even next week? Seriously?
No.
And I second that, we had discussed that.
Yep.
Been in the minutes here.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four day forty for Josh England and his leave bank, which has been discussed several times at this board.
Thank you for throwing it out.
Yes. This will be done on parole call.
Crouch?
Yes.
Maynard?
Yes.
Denton? Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again, Josh.
Stuff to hit the ground on.
Glad you're employed now.
Thank you.
Look at all that, all the damn names.
We should.
I wanted to use the court.
Oh, Mr. Jacob, you're up.
I'm up.
Great or two.
Oh, actually, approval of hired truck driver number two.
Okay, we have gone through all of the interview process, we selected Steve McKinney. And we would like to hire him as our truck driver two, so it's a tractor-trailer combo. Um, very impressed with him in the interview, he's a seasoned gentleman that has a lot of experience. But it's not too seasoned, where it's gonna be short time, he says he's still looking to work for at least another ten years. Right out of high school, he went into the United States Army and, uh, was basically a truck driver there, helping build the roads and started a dump for a home lock and everything. Once he got out of that, kind of continued his truck driving career, so. Seems like a C D L already. Yep, my class A C D L, he's got everything in order, uh.
He lives in town?
Yep, he lives in town, um. But yeah. And it just seems like he has really good attitude, very positive, that's what hard work gave him, he's excited to be part of our team.
Good.
Recommend you approve, um, the starting date December fourth, two thousand twenty-four, I confirm them to Jolene, and the starting wage of twenty-three forty-seven per union contract.
I make a motion to approve the new hire truck driver, Steve McKinney. He will be starting on December fourth, twenty twenty-four, starting at twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents by union contract.
I will second that motion.
See past that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approval of the hire of a truck driver number two, Steve McKinney, starting December fourth, salary of forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents per union contract. Any questions? Concerns?
Are we now done hiring truck drivers? Are you still lacking a few?
Um, I'm sure we're good.
You're good now? Good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Seasonal snowplow operator.
Okay, uh, this is something we talked about not too long ago, having someone on call for, uh, snow emergencies. This person would only be called out when our own guys have had the opportunity. For instance, some snowstorms, we don't call in the graders, just the truck drivers, so if we have, we would call our grader operators, hey, can you fill in this truck? And the reason for that is, um, we have a guy coming out on, um, basically, he's getting hit replacement in December, gonna be out for a while. Just had one retired, we just had one retired, and then of course, we always have, trying to get everyone scheduled lineup, someone's gonna be sick, someone's gonna be on vacation, so just having someone in our back pocket, we've selected Andrew Slaughter for the open seasonal snowplow operator position. An official starting date, uh, saying that Steve's Wednesday, December fourth, twenty twenty-four, and a starting wage of twenty dollars an hour. On his starting date, we'll come in, do the paperwork, and we'll also kinda get him in a truck, get him familiar with their, nobody's not figuring it out, and probably get him on some.
Good idea.
Make sure, here's your chains, here's how to get salt and sand and all that, ready to do. Probably do a half day or full day within that day.
Rogers, or?
Grandson.
Grandson, oh, oh. Oh, good.
I need to reprint this, I see that I just caught a tape. I'll get that to you. Send it over to me.
I'd make the motion to approve the seasonal, uh, snowplow operator, Andrew Slaughter, for the hourly wage of twenty dollars an hour starting December fourth.
And he has his C D L?
Yes.
We need to go through.
Is he the beer driver?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I second that.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, hire a seasonal snowplow operator. Be Andrew Slaughter, at a price of twenty dollars per hour, starting December fourth. Are there any questions?
I'm just making it out, so as a seasonal employee, he'll work for four months, so that means he cannot work on safety for. But that would lose to a bit.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Have you got the prediction or do you want me to let? We'll get it in February.
Hey, any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, general discussion.
Okay, um, we have a quote for our Malvern shed to be spray foamed. Total quote eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars from Hartland foam in ceilings. And we, uh, budgeted thirty thousand, so I went to see those.
Absolutely, and it's close by.
One thing they'll never regret.
Yeah.
They will not, yeah, that's a good move.
So I'll bring that to you guys next week.
Can they get this done soon?
Yeah, so, um, he'll actually come in, where they're gonna frame in the bathroom, it's up against walls, he's gonna spray just that area first. And that one's gonna be flexible, so.
How is that for?
He's gonna work with.
Mice? I mean, it's.
If you allow mice to get into it, they will dig holes and travel, but, but once you get it covered, well, I've covered mine with plastic and then put some cheap paneling over it, so they never bother.
Haven't had any trouble, okay. Okay, that'll be cool.
Just maybe you'll fix it, you'll go to the department store and buy you a can of foam.
True.
Replace it, so.
Is there a guarantee or a warranty or anything on this foam, do they do that? Don't know.
No, I don't think they ever had a problem.
Okay.
Same with heat.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Not the old shop, you could just feel, it's like you're sitting on the side.
Cause you can see through, so.
You can see.
Everybody's ears blowing.
Yeah, what world would it be?
Good, they deserve it, yeah.
Jacob, can I get a copy of that before the meeting next week?
Sure, sure. And then I wanted to bring up, um, when Amy was here, Kevin was at a board meeting and discussed about getting road petitions, what would you call them?
Road petitions.
Road petitions, um, in the back room, sometimes we have to come up and look for them, or we're looking for right away, and he had to stand on a stool, reach up on his head to try and pick out the right one, and, um, and he said that we were gonna digitize it, so I was just wondering if there was any follow-up, if she had passed to give that on to you, or if we could come up with a plan to.
I think Kevin said it was gonna come out of their budget, wouldn't it?
Where are they located at now? Are they?
I can show you those, remind me when we're, when we're sketch plans. They're beautiful, most of her in, in a calligraphy, but they're the original road tickings from the county.
So they just came in or?
Yeah, like we had about everything else, that's something to put on our budget for scanning next year, so.
It's in the road.
Budget touch list.
Let's say, yeah, let's kind of next.
Yeah.
Well, if I remember right, they're big and they're brittle, correct?
No, they're not big.
Well, they're not big.
The road plat book is, that's, that's, that's what they're, they're, usually half by fourteen, but they're brittle.
And then would they still stay in the vault?
Yes, she would keep all the original records.
Do we, um, usually hire company to come and do that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and we've used it before, uh, Luann can help me through that.
We did the recorders.
Yeah, COT system.
For like three, four years, wasn't it?
That, they brought the key.
Yeah. Yeah. Should be a Jeep expense, there's not a million of them, but there's, there's enough of them that need to be.
Definitely consider that.
Okay. When we, like when we did the resolution to vacate to ninety-six, where does it go from there? That should be recorded.
It's in the minutes, yes, yeah.
And I think, if Jason sent some to Brenda to have recorded, then this, I needed to get from her, like booking page, and then write that on the road book.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll talk to her.
Yeah, yeah, when you go record it, they'll record it right now, so you can get the, you get a copy of the recorded document.
So in the future, when I do a resolution to vacate a road, do I then, after the meeting, walk down and give it surgery online, we go up to her?
Once it's recorded, yeah, yeah, I don't know if you record it.
How many to get it recorded?
You tell me how you want it done?
Yeah, either way.
Cause let's get everything signed.
Is that usually after resolution, it's, it's you and then I don't think.
When was that done?
That was done a year and a half ago, maybe.
Yeah, we can, Patrick can play that in a minute.
Okay. Just a year ago.
So that's tonight?
Yeah, then I'm filming. Cause I, I know that's probably the, still the one I've done since we're here, I didn't write it all down, but.
We can figure out where we are, let me do that.
Which I think me and you both agree, it'd probably be nice having that book down at my office, since we use it more.
Yeah.
Does it just move down there?
It can be, I guess, I think it was just cause it's in the fireproof wall, is that why?
Sure.
Yeah. Hands are only copying.
But I guess.
But once you get it digitized.
I guess it is digitized.
That book is scanned, but, but.
But you still need it to be in a whole wider place.
We've, we've only scanned it once, because that's when we digitized everything with some of the other.
I mean, could you get a fireproof safe to put it in?
Oh, it'd be big.
I, I don't know what type it is.
I guess, I'll find it up here, but digitized is ideal for us anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we just may want to schedule it, scan that in in five years.
You just can't digitize, they're having road gets updated, it'd be a yearly thing or, right, two or five year, whatever.
Let's talk about that when we meet, when we get a chance to meet, and we'll kind of make a touch list of things that we need to do.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, just wanted to bring it up, so as you fall through the process. And, uh, last thing for general discussion, we have our trainer training going on this morning and tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I believe it was, uh, with the contact, I don't know, the race track was, uh, nice enough, these weapons used out for training, because we need about a hundred yard, like, hundred yard section for, uh, to set up our obstacle courses and the graders, it's a snow removal training, so, snowball training for graders. Sets up cones and pines and has a few all sorts of maneuvers and.
Thank you, Doug. That's very nice.
Looks like last.
Um, I can go, hang on, what's Doug's last name?
Doug Restrick. Restrick, no. Yeah, that's it.
One thing I have, uh, we haven't discussed yet, on meeting the things, committees that I've attended, I was at Isaac last week, and one of the biggest things was insurance, what they're gonna recommend and what we will have to have in place. For, I guess you wanna call it compliance with them, but if we're not in compliance with them, FEMA may not show up at all. That's just, this way they're gonna run it. You, you're very good, I, I brought up what I said, we have, I mean, monthly meetings are just quarterly. For safety.
Safety, quarterly.
We might have, we might have to bump that up.
Well, we have monthly, monthly safety committee meetings, quarterly of everything.
Well, then if they haven't really written all the rules on that part yet, uh, from what we could get from them.
And they have toolbox talks in between all that, the format is with their own.
Uh, but our insurance is going down this year, oh, point zero three percent.
Better than doing that. Say that's almost like a five percent.
And why is that happening? Nothing goes down.
They have catastrophic health, this, this is on the health, catastrophic health issues that they've had in the past.
Fantastic, maybe the wellness program is working, right?
And that's another thing that, uh, if you don't participate in, will be a ding against.
Say that again?
If you don't participate in a wellness program from food on down, you know, uh, they call it, they just said it will be a ding against you, so, so it's.
So Richard, is the, every department needs to do a safety, uh, program?
I think there's, I think there's one here in the courthouse, been there a safety meeting here in the courthouse with Travis, I thought Travis would be the one doing that.
We have a traffic.
I think though, I've heard of it, but I don't, cause I'm sure.
But, no, all, and, and you are the biggest, two of the biggest departments that they're reading pressure on, is county engineer and county conservation. The sheriff, they said, he's a problem anyway.
And we document all that, we have a bunch of our safety committee meetings, we do agenda, we do minutes, toolbox, talk, sort of documentation for the form we give out, and then sign in sheets for our safety meetings and doctors.
And they said if you wanted any help on anything for safety and stuff, they could get people for you, and I said, so, so far we've been having very, very good people in your safety.
At how, how soon does this happen?
Probably the start of the year. And the number one player in the game is our agent.
All right.
Few words of why, you said.
Keep eating those carrots.
No, you don't eat carrot.
Why?
Did you see where they had all the recalls on carrot because they have equal mine?
Uh-uh.
Yes.
Just stay away from Excel at pieces, dude.
No, was it Excel that I ate or was it? I was supposed to meet Kevin. And I was coming back from a meeting and I was starving, just so it was, I don't care. You, oh, you don't do that. Don't forget it.
All I can say is, thank God we got some moisture and stuff where the way guys can actually work in the roads.
That's good for everyone.
I mean, it's been, um, they've gotten rid of a lot of ripples and rough places, you know, finally getting the crevices filled in and get the water to run off of the road and down the road, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So Jake, I know this isn't your problem, I need to call the, the, um, uh, the lane land. When the trucks come out and it's super muddy, those cars are, that's slick, and I don't know, I don't know how to fix it, I don't know if they need to come and, cause you, you come flying on there at sixty miles an hour, and it's, and you hit this. And you hit.
Fifty-five.
Okay, fifty-five, but what I'm trying to get at, you hit that, that slide, it, it was real, there was cars that were slamming the brakes, well, it's kind of like ice, you don't slam on your brakes, it's serious, and I don't. It, it was real, there was cars that were slamming the brakes. Well, it's kind of like ice. You don't slam on your brakes. It's serious and I don't know, I don't know.
Sheriff Road.
Alright. You wanna call it? You want me to come on? Okay, I don't care, but I. I was behind a car that it was really, really close.
But yeah, they can install. Like the construction versions, they have the bigger cobblestone.
Cause it was really suave. Okay.
Well, have you ever been on top of the mountain? Why they drag it that far?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, would you guys like me to?
Next on the agenda if you want.
And then right after we'll get this letter and open it up.
Mike, you want to come up to the table? You want to stand back there? Makes no difference.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thank you for emailing me on Saturday. I'll remind you. Um, I guess the easy thing first, Richard sent me this letter, um, presumed within the conference board. I don't think there's been a meeting of the conference board to where he can take formal action on it. Richard, when was the last conference board meeting?
Last conference board meeting was probably last, uh, what, March, April? We have an annual meeting. It was March seventh, I believe.
That's another problem. Minutes, so, so you don't have the authorization to send me this.
And I have been told by the county attorney, oh, let me finish. I have been told by the county attorney, if you have a problem with this, go down and visit with her.
With who?
County attorney. She drew the letter up. I'm not even supposed to say this much. Being I am chairman of this board, chairman of the conference board, I have, I'm authorized to sign that letter.
Okay. You need to have a meeting of the conference board. You have to talk to Christine. I don't have to talk to Christine. You have to talk to Christine. And also, you don't have to like what I say, but I can still say things. Okay? You don't have to like it, Richard.
I don't have, yeah.
You don't have to like it. Also, if you read all of that code that you reference here, at my request, I get to have a hearing. Did you read that part?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you wanna have a hearing, call a hearing.
When are we gonna have a conference board meeting?
I have no idea.
Because there's another issue at hand at the conference board.
I think this is what we're talking about. I wanna hand these out to everybody because, and you wrote it, Mike, I mean, you can have one.
Actually, I think the post has been deleted.
No, it's still out there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, and uh, the reason why we're even having this meeting or the letter is because Mike was terminated from the board of review. Because of what is on the paper in front of you.
I'm glad you brought this, cause I looked and looked for this, okay? Um, as you notice, I was doing some blocking and tackling for somebody here and this uh, Shirley, Rock Shirley is always antagonizing, well, Mr. Sayers. And so I jumped in and did some blocking and tackling for Mr. Sayers, okay? And it was way down, way down. The post, you know, the string of stuff led way beyond my original comment, okay? I did not represent myself as a member of the board of review and say that.
Mike, you did. On the second page, full disclosure, I am a Mills County Board of Review and have zero intention of stepping down. That was the problem.
Okay.
You said, you called this taxpayer this name, which I won't say, and then you, uh, the comment about the post office and your name.
To any event.
Or the road.
To, to any event. You told me the last time we met, you couldn't fire me, and this is a.
I never said that, Mike.
Yeah, you did.
No, Mike, I never said I couldn't fire you.
Yeah, and actually you did.
We're not getting in an argument.
So when is there gonna be a meeting of the conference board? When are the minutes of the conference board gonna be posted, like the last time I asked? I'd like that to be today, please.
I don't, I don't have access to those.
The conference board member minutes are on the web. The board of review minutes are on the web.
Can we see them?
Sure, under the agenda and minutes.
Oh boy, I need to do a little playing first for mouse and mouse.
I can't find them in the uh, agenda center.
I think body else.
Maybe Patrick showed me how to do this once. Settings?
The little gear on the left hand towards the bottom.
So you said these two, Rock Shirley is what this has been going on, right, Mike?
He's an antagonist and I thought I'd just step in and find what I believe he is, which I get to do, and yet. Mills County Agenda Center. Right, current top should be the conference board.
Assessor Board of Review, Assessor Conference Board.
Doesn't come up on my computer like that. Let's open the conference board. Okay, there's the agenda, there's the minutes.
Over there with the little check mark, that's on the, right there.
Can we print that off?
I don't, I don't need it. I just didn't find it.
Okay.
So they are getting there. I have not seen the assessor portion of that. When I look at it, it has the conference board comes up first. And so maybe it's some kind of setting on my computer that has that. So I am glad they're there, and that brings up another point. Um, recently, the conference board has hired an attorney uh, to appeal something, but there hasn't been no meeting of the conference board. There's been no meeting of the conference board to appeal my PAB decision. If there has been, it's not there.
A conference board meeting would not meet to do an appeal of district court. And I believe Brad Ryan told you the other day that there have been no meetings and it's in litigation and that's about all we can say about it.
There has been no conference board meeting for them to make a decision to appeal the PAB decision that was in my favor.
They, they don't need to do that, Mike.
I, I, if someone could show me where that is in the statute to code, administrative rules, I would love to see it. And if it's true, I'll leave it alone, because I'm gonna win again. And by the way, Brad Ryan is doing that pro bono. He's doing it for free.
Yeah, no cost to the taxpayers. No.
Which should tell you something. I gotta take down the pen on him and he's not over with it. I'm, I'm a commoner and I'm even attorney and he's not happy with it. And I believe you guys, along with the conference board, can stop that, by the way. Because we're gonna go into it again. We have a pre-trial hearing on the third.
And when is the next conference?
It'll be with budget in January.
And, and here's the deal. When, when she hires an attorney to, to represent what she should know how to do, right? It costs you guys, the county, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars each time. Brett Ryan is getting rich doing this. And I see it when, when it started, I was gonna say, you told me, what was the number? Six hundred dollars a year in taxes, property taxes, okay? It makes zero sense for me to hire counsel to do that, where she comes in with guns blazing and battleships. Okay? She should represent herself at PAB hearings.
But Mike, she's probably wanting legal advice and that's where she needs probably the help to know.
She's certified. I believe, is that right? You're certified?
Yeah, but I'm not an attorney and the board of review has always had an attorney to represent them. Uh, twenty-one years they've had an attorney.
So let's change it, because you're costing this county a lot of money with recently me, McDowell, Sears, uh.
Sears?
Yeah, remember the Sears? My first job on board, there was a Sears that kept coming back year after year after year and going to the PAB, going to the, the PAB. Okay? You should be able to do this yourself. If you feel so strongly about your, your convictions, go represent yourself. Quit costing the county so much money. Fifteen thousand dollars, I think, is uh, are, is about a hundred and fifty loads of rock. I might be wrong. In this county could use.
Alright, so back me up, Mike. Is this whole going to court from wanting your property to be ag residential?
No, there are no such classifications, ag residential. You're thinking of zoning.
Okay, so what stands from this was what? Because of?
My, my, I have argued since two thousand seventeen that my property should be reclassified agricultural.
Just ag?
Yes, there, there, again, there's no such thing as ag res. It's ag or residential or commercial or industrial.
Right, okay.
And zoning would be the use.
And zoning would be, be a totally different calculus. Because of what I do of my property, I meet all the qualifications. The property assessor, appeals board agrees with me that I should be ag. The assessor, and I think more so the deputy assessor and Brad Ryan don't apparently like to lose and they just can't let it go over there.
How many acres are we talking?
It matters five and a half. acreage has been, and the assessor will attest to that too. How many acres is?
I thought it was ten.
Nope, there is no acres requirement, period.
Last year.
There was.
There is not.
There never has, there never has been.
That is wrong.
Last year, the board came, or somebody came to the board and we changed a point nine one acres of residential to ag. It's easy because she was doing a profit, gardening thing, and there was no dwelling. So that was an easy thing. But there is, I was giving you an example of the acreage. There's no acreage limit.
Nor any, I would say.
No. What it does is you have to do a good faith intent profit from an ag endeavor, paraphrases, paraphrases. And it's the present use that is the, uh, over and above the primary use of the property.
We go with that when the grapes start coming out of here.
And, and I won. I won that. Now, for some reason, the attorney, well, well, back to the main argument. The, the board of review is appealing the PAB decision to a district court. The board of review could not have done that without the authority of the conference board. The conference board or the board of review have not met to make that decision.
That is not correct.
We have not met.
Oh, we've not met, but it does not take the conference board nor the board of review to do an appeal.
Christina, what I said was they have not met. Have they met?
No.
Okay, so that's accurate, right?
That is accurate.
Has the conference board met?
No.
So that's accurate. So what were you saying was inaccurate?
That they need to me to do an appeal.
Show it to me. We go through this all the time downstairs.
Yes, we do.
Show it to me and you or Brenna Mel cannot show me. She says, this is what she said, Brenna Mel.
Please leave the deputy out of it, Mike.
If you're, no, cause she's involved in this. If you're, this is what the deputy says. If you're a farmer and you own more than one piece of ground, your ag, your property should be classified ag. That's not true. It is not true. And I asked her, I said, show it to me and I'll, show it to me in the code, administrative rules, statute, something, and I'll believe you. But she can't. She can't show it to me. I can show you properties that are misclassified all across this county. All across, across this county. So, the conference board has not met. I get to have a hearing if I request it, but I'm telling you right now, you prefer me on the tight side of the table, I'm on the narrow, not on the other side of the table. So you misstepped in this, because I will be representing people. I will find them, I will bring them to you. Okay? So you decide what side of the table you want to be on.
I'm here not on the board of review anymore.
Until I have a hearing.
Okay.
So that matters though. Things are urgent in this. I, I could not find this. It, it was far off the original topic when I set out on the board. Alright, my next item. Speed limit on two hundred forty street. There is a sign headed northbound, right by the church, right in that vicinity, that says forty-five miles an hour. So we spruce that up for dust. This is kind of where it can allow the dust season, but during the dust season, it's terrible. Car traffic has increased so much over the last ten years with the school moving, uh, uh, cause now we got two trips bringing kids back and forth to school. We got uh, delivery trucks to war. We got just all kinds of traffic. We've got the traffic that comes uh.
Delivery trucks go past your place, Mike?
What?
Like delivery trucks go past your place?
Yeah, I mean, just coming to our, we have five or six more houses on our road.
That's some division.
This, yeah, well, uh, uh, I live with Gulf Horse. Two hundred forty street leads north of town. And I live right there. No, it's right there. And zoom in on there. You can see my cattle that I don't farm, watch them. Okay? By the way, while you're there, there's a gully in my, in there. I don't know, footy, it starts where, right where the mowing stops. And I feel that, and I'd like to continue mowing down my dish. There's a gully and you can't see it, it's the grass. I don't know, foot wide, what do you mean? I can feel it.
It's surely a gully.
No, it's, it's a tree, tree.
So Mike, where's the, where's the, uh, speed limit sign?
Uh, down by the church.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we, I don't know, maybe we can see it on the. Anyway, my ask is this. Can we spruce up, I think that's it right there. Can we spruce up that sign, maybe put some flags on it? The sign coming back the other direction with say forty-five mile an hour limit flags. And then, I mean, our, our traffic is, is it's increased dramatically. There was not a traffic count in two thousand twenty, I think because of COVID, it was. There was not a traffic count in two thousand twenty, I think because of COVID, it was south weather.
Should be getting it still, but about this summer, the traffic control part.
See, that's disappointing that it happens during the summer. Because a lot of the traffic that is generated from this comes from the sports complex and, and school.
And they don't live that long, so they're not a great representation.
I don't, I think it's gonna be a terrible count, there won't be much change, but really after, after a sporting event, after a sports practice now, because practice used to be over by the high school, and now it's at the field. So you've got fifty drivers, you know, a big portion of drive northern town.
So once it hit thirty-five, you're in city limits. Is that what it's doing?
Why? I don't see a sign going south.
There is a. And, uh, probably half of that road gets, uh, dust control. From the, from the-
It looks like in front of the church is dust control.
Yes, so in front of the church gets dust control, then there's a gap, and then, uh, huses, uh, the, the house south of me.
Okay.
Uh, gets dust, can I just point here? Yeah, there's dust control from about right here up to here.
Oh. Well, that's a big, that's like three miles.
No, that's-
No?
Quarter mile. Maybe.
Yeah, okay.
So, speed limit signs, please, just, I, I know it's not gonna help, but they're still gonna drive whatever they're gonna drive.
Well, like I've always told you, you have a backbone that you can go on, and the cops go right out there.
Then if we can put down just a little bit more, back to the plan B of the Air W. Hand it down just a little bit, a little more. This traffic here, well, we got all these new houses here, right?
Right.
And is there a chance this could be forty-five coming up around here, over here?
Is there any signs here at all?
No. And it, it's good, that's not my problem. That gets a lot of dust control too. But it just makes sense. While I have your attention.
Yeah.
The road gets really-
And that's a pretty sharp curve.
Even just pretty tight.
Yeah.
And I probably would do a fifty-five. It really doesn't prove that every section of that road.
I agree, I understand, and I don't think the sign is really, it, it, it's a it's a lipstick on paper, you know, but at least attempt to be something for God's sake, and that's all dust control there.
There's two parts to it. A lot of times on the rural road, especially the bigger things.
At least it looks like they're going past. Right in here. Right in here, the road is really narrow, and that culvert, I think, needs to be extended. There's probably a one-to-one front stop one now, or steeper. It gets really narrow right in there. And I gotta believe there's a lot of traffic on that road, because that's where they cut off from Park Place and and other subdivisions over to, to the school. And that intersection is atrocious. Right? Go out there and drive that, try to turn north. Yeah, right in there, that turn.
Well, the cars just pop right over that hill.
Well, what happens, if you can go back just a little bit, to the other side. What happens is when cars, it, it's a sight distance problem both ways. And when cars are going out, they spin their wheels here, throw gravel out, and make a giant rut. And in my opinion, that seal code needs to come down four or five car lengths and have it solve the problem.
This isn't the second.
No, yeah, that, that's the other way.
It's the other way. If you turn this way, you shouldn't go around, turn it that way.
If you would, please, go drive that stretch both directions, you'll see another spot too. Same thing on the east end of the road, when you're turning south. So I appreciate you looking at this.
Yeah, I might go there, send it, and help with that.
It, it's been patched. Your crews have been out there, go grade it in, a bunch of rock in, Asian, but it, it doesn't last long.
Well, we definitely can get another forty-five mile an hour sign up there. As far as reducing the speed limit.
It, it is reduced to two hundred thirty, that's correct, so no more screen loop.
To what? What if I?
Yeah.
Yeah, two thirty is fortunate.
Right about your place to start switching.
Yep.
And I know it's not gonna solve it. Nobody gives the Sears department people. State of the art or something.
Hello? Got it, got it.
Okay. So Jake, you're looking to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I'm about to say, there's no way, I'm not gonna say anything, but I, two hundred forty is in our radar. If we ever add the code limits to our system, it's gonna be two forty.
Shaved out, yeah. Um, these, these roads that lead out town, I'm sure there's some over power, but as they're leading out of town, they get the most traffic. And then-
Over power especially, and it needs to have some, you got a few that we-
Expend. Yeah. But there's an ordinance, there's a seal code, right?
Yeah, we'd rather run one that's, 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 that's- Especially to stabilize the things moving down. In the past, yeah, you can add the oil, same oil that's on the seal code. We can mix that, we can mix and span, flash.
Right.
Right, right. But a lot of these roads, like-
It's just that-
Just for example, like if they're really good at that road, it's a lot of traffic, it's a lot.
It's only a million dollar mile.
I didn't share.
It's so expensive.
I, I deal in, you know, a hundred million dollar, so.
That's cheap.
That's cheap.
Yeah.
But I know, I know that it's not here, I think I would- I, I think after, I mean, I've lived here a long time, and, well, I'll tell you, uh, Shark Street, leading in north, or out of town, used to be seal code. And, um, that had to be redone on a very regular basis, like I'll say every, my, yourself. So Steve DeBree's guy, I used to work in the, um, Steve DeBree's got here in the nineties sometime. That was one of the things I brought to him, I said, "Steve, we're always redoing the seal code, why don't we just pay them?" He goes, "Okay."
You found money somewhere, huh?
We used local funds, I believe, and paid from the edge of town up to the highway with six inches and a half of raised, something, and it hasn't been touched since. And the other thing I'll say about seal code is that the road going to the Gulf Horse, I can't remember the last time that was redone, it's been more than thirty years ago, so route on two forty does not receive a lot of heavy traffic. There's, uh-
A lot of traffic, but not yet.
Not heavy traffic.
Not, yeah, traffic, but it-
Right, and so I think that ordinance for seal code needs to be not rid of, whatever you do, get rid of that, and let the engineer use- Let, let the engineer use their, their judgment, their training, say, "All right, this is the best solution for this road." I don't know, we've actually out bought it, I just don't think that we're trying to stay away from it. If we hard service, I mean, we're trying to go the asphalt way. That's why the kid road, Eviro, was kind of my test pattern. Put two inches on that, and then I, you can't do two inches, and then two inches, because it's considered a maintenance course, my direct.
Yeah, less than two inches is breaking.
Yeah, so you can't go year after year, then eventually it's year two, four, six, you know, and you have to wait a year or two before you-
You gotta check the V O T.
You gotta play the game, but it's, but it, but it's working because kid, like, do you get heavy traffic and a lot of park equipment, and it's held up. So far. Two hundred fortyth up to Gaston, I don't think would take hardly any, well, the edges, the, the, the edges need to be cleaned up and fronts. A little bit of cleaning in the ditches. But it wouldn't take a whole lot of getting that ready, and then from two hundred fortyth and Gaston West, excuse me, East, it's perfect. It, nothing needs to be done to that before seal code. And then, two hundred fortyth and Gaston West, there are one culvert, I think, needs to be extended or replaced. And then that, that's good too, yeah. So anyway, thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
And I'll talk to Deshaun, but either way, I'm gonna be on one side of the table with the other Board of Review, you see a lot of them.
You would think they would try to.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
Think they would, because I'm different, and for thirty years.
Amanda brought that in.
Oh, yeah.
She swears there was not, but I don't know. Alright, I'll get this printed in, did you guys have any love?
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yep, oh, we're good right now, yeah, thank you.
Which session today, one thirty for now?
Yes, yes, there's an agenda for it, right there on the basket.
So we can do this. Amber, why don't you come up, talk about Santa Claus?
Right, it's happy.
And you know what our day is like.
Alright, so I would like to have permission, I'm just like, I'm just gonna see this, you know, probably.
Amber, it made such wonderful pictures. Did anybody try to tear it apart, or there a heart on it, or it's a beautiful slide?
And if it's okay, I purchased eight, eight and a half foot tall, uh, reindeer to go in front of it. It's like a super tall. It's like the perfect proportions, so, right, I can always return it or put it somewhere else, but it's cool if you guys-
As long as we're not responsible for it, someone brings it or-
Is it a earthing?
No, it's a plastic one.
Oh, okay, okay.
If, if it gets broken, that's unfortunate.
But I think that's such a golden heart.
With everything so far, so.
Is it something the kids would crawl on?
No, it's really, it's back.
And I, I think our cameras from City Hall might pan that way. So I think, I think we, I think the city's cameras might catch them.
Okay.
And we got a couple in that area.
If it happens, that sucks, but I'm not gonna like, I'm not gonna do that.
We've had so many people rave about our courthouse last year, so.
And then we have guys up top too.
Yeah, I see he's already started, so that's gonna be wonderful.
So can I put it out sooner than later?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Put it out whenever you want.
I just have a lot of schedules, sometimes like, ooh, I've got-
Do you have it about a day, like, do you have a date in mind, or?
It's supposed to be a nice weekend.
Yeah, this week or next week at the latest.
And what is holiday festival?
The first weekend of December.
So that's not?
The fifth and sixth. You're telling the wrong date, like I did.
No, I just, I wasn't sure because technically, next Sunday is December, so I wasn't sure.
So the next, yep. Yep, yep, it's coming up quick. And then we can leave it the whole month?
Come up, not in the middle of January, that's always depressing.
A couple weeks.
Well, we did, he turned down the, the lights. It was, it was quite a while.
It was like March?
I don't know if it was March. I like leaving them, they're not like Christmas, they're, yeah.
Especially when it snows.
Yeah, and I'm meeting with the city and Fire Chief Gray on Thursday, because I also got, uh, like some Christmas balls this time. I've been to make work on the tree, but I don't know how we're gonna do that, so. I just bought them and wolfing.
It'll be the other and the janitor's-
Amber would be glad to climb up a ladder.
Yeah, yeah, Amber and Amber will all jump up there.
They'll take care of it. I don't see a problem with it, like, over the month of January, because I think people enjoy seeing it, so.
Yeah, I think if it's dark out and they turn on early, oh, this is not so bad, you don't feel so-
Very cool. The only thing I would ask that if, for whatever reason, if it was to happen, if they got vandalized, we're moved.
Yeah.
So does that mean extended cords? For the Christmas lights? I'm not- Your, your ornaments, is that solar or is that?
No, those are just, um, like a bead inch Christmas ornament.
Oh, they don't hide them?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
And again, if they don't work, I will return them, but I did get bows that we should be able to attach to the lights as they're coming up. So we're meeting, yeah, to go over kind of the logistics of how the fire truck ladder and dropping ornaments are gonna, better be.
Amber, thank you for doing all that. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
But a lot of people should get appreciated last year.
Yeah, we don't have to go to Omaha, we can do it at here.
Exactly, right, amen to that.
Yeah, and we've got, um, people working on getting some market activities for Saturday, so.
Fantastic. Well, I'm sick of that. Hi. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you next year. I don't know.
They need to want to get geologic, we can't, I know.
Yeah. Happy day.
Thank you, Amber. Good morning, my Patrick. Living the dream. Okay, you let me?
It'll go on our way too.
Okay. So. What you got?
Well, circling back on audio video creates, I don't know if this is an action item for the day since it's Amber's first day, but I got the quote back from Hartline from Kyle. And we're looking at, uh, a little over fifteen thousand. Basically what they're proposing is replacing this spring and then adding a Cisco room bar. So that the top one's got the video on the other end of the room bar.
Replacing the screen?
Yep.
We're gonna do it.
That's.
Sell it?
Good, there's other options, I could put used to it. I guess we could stick it down in the commutator maybe, not that wall. Still on it, so.
Good.
Like I said, Amy had talked about maybe lost money, but I don't know, that's still, you need to look through funds.
That's, that's one thing I would like to sit down with you, Amber, that, that do, we all have a grasp on.
See where we're at.
I'm the one that's spending it, but you're the one that's seeing it come in, and I. I, I, I'd just like to see that.
Me too.
And then give us a copy.
Then we all know.
The ARPA coming up.
A good idea to sit down, as, you know, have a work session and. Yeah.
Budget sessions, so it'll give us some time to look at it, but at least tell us what's coming in.
Are there ARPA dollars still available? Because those have to be spent or obligated by the end of December.
We, we're close, but we don't know that for.
Alright.
We don't know what's.
We've asked several times.
Can we put that? Can we take what ARPA money there is to show? We, the money can sit there, but if we can make a statement.
No, it has to be an accident contract. Or an agreement.
Well, we have a contract and stuff, but whether it's enough to cover it or not. But that, the contract's not, probably gonna be done for. About they've been out how many years? For the jail?
No, 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 we're talking about the video.
Well, yeah, but he was, I said ARPA, so he was talking about the ARPA fund that's slated for the jail.
Yeah, it's not a jail, but yeah, but ARPA lost.
Yeah.
What do we have? How much is, look, let's go lost first, what do we have, how much comes in every month? And how much is accounted for? Because we have the lake and the building, we have several things we've. Committed to over the next X amount of years, so if we can say.
You guys gotta let down.
Yes, that way we can do a balance sheet on it, and just have a, I would love to have an ARPA balance sheet, which will go away. Because that, you know, that money's gonna end, but a loss is always big, so I would.
That'd be easy.
It would be handy for all of us, yeah.
Just a report every month, like, if you guys.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be an action item, it'd just be here we are, you know, there's something, this is our balance, because it's. Split three ways, uh, secondary roads gets fifty percent. Uh, it's community development gets tw- uh, twenty-five, and, uh, community betterment, and, uh. Infrastructure, we're on blank, but, uh, no tax, uh, tax breaks, tax breaks twenty-five.
He said that.
Gets X amount of dollars for.
Yeah, yeah, secondary roads gets half of it, so that's, that's, you know, it's half gone all the time.
Okay, so, alright, so, especially.
What's, what's committed? And what do we have? Those are things like when, when Amber comes in or somebody, speaking of Amber, left her phone, so I can take it over to her, since she's my neighbor.
I would text her, but that's not gonna help.
Right, right, right. Um, but I, you know, when, when her or Sandy or, you know, the community comes in and says, you know, Mary Goodison, whoever says, we want. A thousand dollars to put more outlets on the square or speakers, then we can go, oh, we have it here. Or not, oh, we have it here, and then find out we don't.
Because I could even do this, especially to show what that fifty percent looks like in each.
Yes, 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 that would, it would just be good for all of us to see that, especially in budget time coming up.
Is this a stopping point? You wanna know where this fifteen thousand's gonna come from?
Yeah, I just wanna get the quote from, yeah, that we gotta figure out, and if it's not a loss, can we just budget for it this coming year in IT? We're starting that process pretty soon, I suppose, so. But that's what, that's the, I think the best vote is this one from Hartline, uh, Cisco room bar, you know, replace that screen and PC, that's good, that's.
Are you gonna do part of it, you, you said you and Kyle were talking, is this the same company as Kyle, yes, I don't know.
Exactly, yeah, same one, so it's, they're not doing the installation other than delivering the equipment, but there's not much to, so that really.
Sure.
The reason the room bar is all gonna be centralized right there, and it's gonna sit on top of the TV, and. I'm doing a network cable, that's it.
Would that be something the VA could use?
That's too big to go in that place, yeah.
Well, they got a nice screen down there if they want.
Yeah, give me something.
They got, they got plenty of.
So just put it on Craigslist, let's see if we can sell it?
Well, let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's check other departments first, let's, uh.
Is it only five years old?
Yeah, it's a, it's a computer, so as soon as, as soon as you're, as soon as you buy it, it's available. But I would like to see maybe the building zoning office, is that something that would go there, or do. What we have, is it sufficient, I mean, I don't want to just stick it somewhere, just stick it somewhere, we, we'd get a hundred bucks or a thousand bucks out of it, let's sell it, but.
Yeah, I can check with someone, department, and see if it's, it's way too big to fit my craps, so I'm just, yeah. Even out here is a big challenge.
Getting in was a challenge, not getting out is gonna be.
Right, right.
Absolutely. Okay, so should we? Table this until we know where this.
I just take no action on it and just, uh.
Till we find out where we're at? Is that okay with you, Patrick?
Can you go zap a few copies, that's, we just wanted to have it, there's a paper trail on it.
Yep, we'll do it, right now.
At least four, please.
Okay.
But that would be nice to have the, the microphone here, so everyone can hear. The camera, the camera can be here, but it can be a one eighty camera, so you can see from there, and hear.
Absolutely.
It just needs a. The microphone comes out from the ceiling, three here, I mean, mounted here, so everyone would hear. Or at least hear better. But we're trying.
Okay, Jill?
Ready?
Yes.
Ready.
This would've been using like interviews, huh?
Uh, well, we didn't, we got a person that, from the forest, didn't have.
What did, what did you, Detective Wyatt, just gonna meet with him after lunch?
Yeah, yes. Was there, yep. He wanted to stay around, uh, for the truck discussion earlier, then he said he'd be back.
I've hired Jamie Fisher for the full-time universal clerk position in the treasurer's office. She has passed all of her pre-employment screening, and her start date is today.
Today?
Yeah.
How much?
We are starting the starting salary, who would be forty-nine thousand, ten dollars per year.
Universal clerk.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just like it says.
Everything, yes. Actually, right now, she is in Amity with Melissa, they're going to driver's license, uh, orientation, they're doing fingerprinting today, and. And Melissa will stay for the next two and a half days, and she will, uh, learn some driver's license things, and then Jamie will go back in December to those same classes. So I kinda wanted to get that going, and the sooner, sooner the better.
We quit two thousand twenty-nine.
So then you want her to help with the taxes and all that?
Yes.
Jill, what a great idea.
She, she will start with, we gotta get driver's license done first, we've, we've just got, and we've got to get somebody who can do the drives again. Uh, Red Oak has agreed to help us with any re-exams or anything that we have a, that we absolutely have to do, and we have to do it in our county.
Sydney was hopeful too, I mean, it's hoping low down there, they were, they scheduled me right in, and they're good work.
Yeah, so we, we're very fortunate there, and then, uh, then once we get her going, we'll get her with the car drives, we'll get both her and Melissa to. Know the basic stuff, issuing as well, then we'll get her covered, we started open motor vehicle, the simple renewals and to do titles, and then. By then, March should hit, and then she should be able to help start taking some taxes in.
Good.
So.
And I know you know what you're doing, and you're on top of things, but I gotta ask, this is a budgeted position?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
I will make the motion to approve the hire of Jamie Fisher, starting at forty-nine thousand, ten dollars, starting today.
And I definitely will second that, thank you, very good, Jill.
Any other questions for me or Miles, sir? I'm sorry, Richard, he has, I was, he was still writing and I thought, okay, I'll.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve. Hire of Jamie Fisher as a universal clerk. Starting wage forty-nine thousand, ten dollars on today's date, which is the nineteenth, correct?
In fact.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion territory.
Richard, we need to have that, we put it on the Amber Lando thing.
Okay.
I made the motion, then seconded for you to set up mountain, maintain all of those, uh, things, so. If there's any additional costs, Crouch Farms will pay for it.
We didn't have much discussion on that, so it's all set and stoked.
It was easy.
Do you feel the love?
Thank you.
Certainly.
What's she thinking about this weekend?
Yeah, she, she wants to give them all the weather's nice, but that's.
Well, I'm.
Just lay down there, right?
And a new reindeer.
Yeah, you know, it's just kind of like the house and.
Right, right.
As far as I'm concerned, we could make it a yearly thing, you know.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I like approving it every year, though, just in case something comes up.
Well, they changed, they changed people with their fashion, we could shuffle hard and stuff.
Never know, GMU may go under, so we may have to put a cypic system out there, you might not be able to.
So what else is happening in your office? Anything you're excited?
Same old, same old, trying to get everything written up and focused, so.
Thank you again for the driver's license thing.
Are you still dragging your big bags of money to the bank, or is that kind of?
No, that's kind of, that's, uh, gonna make start it, even the girls at the bank mentioned that the other day, you don't have big deposits anymore.
No, I don't.
I like that coming in.
Yeah, but, yeah, me too, but we're still holding our own, and, okay, and like I said, the cities are not near as good as they were, I. I have one locked in for eighteen months at five point five, that's.
I was gonna text you, but.
And, and I've got the rest of the.
Get some work done, I left a year.
That's gonna handle it, right?
Yeah, the coffee or the phone and the coffee.
Uh, I did bank, Alvin Bank the other day, and we got that for.
Well, not bad, it's not, yeah.
Not like.
It's not sixty-seven.
But it's nice to be on that side.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good problem to have. Yes.
What you do?
Keep it as hot as I can.
Absolutely. Fantastic.
Alright.
Thank you.
See you next week then.
Okay, thanks, Jill, you're welcome. Steve out there rolling?
Well, he wants to stand at the counter, we see Steve, we saw him, he wants to stand out there, just a couple minutes ago.
Good, Richard, where do we have that dinner set?
That one that bleeds over here, as you walk.
He's out there, Mel? I was gonna say, it sounds like he's out there.
Okay.
He's got a bad body, it's not flowing.
Um.
Where it runs in up here and goes out.
It's an estimate, so he's probably got papers on that, Jill.
Belly in it.
Is he close by?
In the winter time, it's cold, and then we're. I believe that's one he's talking about.
Or if he just wants to give us the paper, he doesn't have to stop. Wow, Richard, I don't see, uh, public health meeting this week. Richard.
You're an idiot, and piss me off, girl, just be careful.
Thank you.
So we can skip to my one quick?
Go for it.
So I'm requesting, uh, approval to hire a temporary as needed advisory help, um, just as we go through budget season and try to figure out what reports need to go where. Um, I will be working with, um. Isaac to get a mentor, um, but I need somebody with some knowledge of what the county's doing. So I'm asking for approval to hire Carol Robertson as temporary as a help only, um. Probably a few hours here and there, just to kind of get me over a couple questions I have, um, it would be at thirty-five dollars an hour. That would just get me kind of up to date on where the county has been and what, you know, what we do as usual practice.
Hey, but, but, but you're that budget, is that a budgeted item, or is it?
I don't know.
Just wondering, just, just how we're gonna pay.
Right.
That's our job.
Yeah. I believe there was budgeted for an additional clerk that had never been built, um, so I would try to stake out that.
Well, well.
Yeah, because no one has taken. I can't think the last lady's name.
Maybe it was Lisa.
unstable.
But, yeah, I don't, and that position's not been built, which I will eventually come to you guys to talk about, but not obviously right now, but.
We'll have a budgeted number.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's inevitable.
I make a motion to hire a temporary advisory consultant, um, thirty-five dollars an hour. Are you putting any type of, um, how many hours, Amber, or are you, I'm sure it's hard to say.
Yeah, it's hard to say, but I think.
Because a budget season will be the tough one.
Yeah, and I've just tried, there's some into the year reports that, um. That I'm gonna need some, a little bit of guidance on, and I'll work on trying to get a mentor too, so it won't be as much, but just for that. Background knowledge that I don't have.
Which she's heading for Carol Robertson and the Isaac mentor.
Isaac will set up the mentor.
Yeah. Okay. And that will be my first call, unless it's county specific question, but my first, and then I, I do plan on trying to be good for my mentor to talk to me.
There's a moment right here. Could have been Sallyport.
About just the solution software and how to run through it, very different from what I'm used to, just some learning from stuff that I'll probably get learned faster.
One second.
Hey. The motion made and seconded to hire temporary as needed advisory consultant. For the auditor's office. At thirty-five dollars an hour.
Time basis.
Yep, very good, yep.
Are there any other questions, concerns, comments?
I would think it's pretty tough to. So I get some track of the hours.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion territory. Cool.
Gutter man.
I got three more bids, I think we, uh, had a couple early on, one was for nine thousand, one was for fifty-two hundred, I think. Uh, that was just for repairs, so I reached out to a couple, I got two local guys, I did reach out to Gator.
But it ain't a good deal, yeah?
Yeah, uh, but they turned it down.
They did?
Yeah, didn't want to do it, which is fine, but, uh, they.
To beat another job, not beat enough job?
He wasn't, uh, he wasn't sure that he was gonna have the workforce to do it.
Okay.
So he said whether, and instead of saying that's something I can do, I just assume that commit myself.
Absolutely.
So I got a hold of Jared Horton Construction, local Kings, local, and then Scott Enterprises. Now, Scott Enterprises, um, going through some information we had on the courthouse, uh, they worked on the roof here.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. They even had us in their database. Eight, um, so. Seventy-seven years ago. Yep.
Well, were they the ones that put up the gutters?
Then I'm not sure about it, he did say they worked on the roof, um. That Scott Enterprises, they've got two different quotes, one is for a thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and that is to address the issue that we have on the east side of the building. We've got water going down on the sidewalk, and then we've got another bad leak over here on the west side, that would just address those two areas. And they have another bid of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's to reseal all the seams around the gutter, no replacement for those guys.
Are they good enough that you can re?
Yeah, the only, the only thing is, is that in like another twenty years, we gotta be doing it all over again, okay?
It's a, it's a seal of it's a.
Yeah, um, but they, they, yeah, they didn't, they didn't give us a price for new guys. Um, same thing goes with King, they just wanted to give a price for a repair, uh, that was eighteen hundred dollars for the whole, the whole courthouse. Um, and then Jared Horton Construction, oh, there's one other bid on that, um, on the south side of Sallyport, we've got a, like a half moon gutter. And that water wants to kind of slosh out of that, we've got that retaining wall there, and it, we've already had to replace a corner of it because of the gutter system there. So that five eighty-three is to replace that south gutter and the downspout and length of the downspout that comes down into the yard, past the rock wall, so we're not gathering. past the rock wall, so we're not gathering water.
Behind the wall.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, Jared, we've got a number of estimates on that, um. The first one is to replace the south side, that's nine hundred thirteen dollars, kind of the ballpark with Kings. Um, the other one is to put in seven inch seamless gutters all the way around the courthouse and that's twenty thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars, that would, that would do the entire courthouse. Um, the next is, um, case out gutters going down to the downspouts, um, which they would have to do when they put the new gutters on, that's another nine grand, or seal the seams and all the existing gutter boxes for thirty-two hundred and forty-one dollars. So however we wanna, uh, approach that, um, we can correct these guys, um.
So to replace the gutters, it's gonna be around twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Like the Kings. To clean and reseal them and then remove.
Yeah.
Replace the south side.
All of these guys are gonna have to clean the existing caulk or whatever seamlet they used when they originally put it up.
Whatever's in them.
Yeah, well, then you know what? There's not much in there.
You probably don't get up there with a ladder and look inside very much, do you?
No, but these guys did, they, they took photographs and, um, I didn't write in permanent, it would be a whole bunch of paper. Uh, they are pretty clean, surprisingly so, so.
Trees are that tall, so.
No, the, the only ones that we might have to look at too in the future are these ones over here and the, on the side here, but I think if we keep Steve coming in and trimming stuff up, we shouldn't have a problem with that. So, um, yeah, they were surprisingly clean, you know, of the breeding, so that's a good thing.
So do they tear apart the old seam and then reseam it?
No, they just, they, they clean it, they get rid of the old caulk, they burn it up as much as need be and then just reseal it. Okay, and it's not rocket science when it comes to it.
Is that supposed to last ten years?
You never know.
They, they don't say?
No, they've been up there, they did the roof two years before I got on the board, so it was about two thousand.
Three hundred years ago.
Yeah. Two thousand one, they put the metal roof on and did the gutter work. Yeah, so here you are, almost twenty-five years, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four years, you know, we've had what problems? None really, none, none, except for this one site here that started manifesting itself a couple winters ago.
Yeah.
And that's the one that I'm concerned about.
Well, that's the one that gets, collects the ice.
I was gonna say, I should get ice as well.
Destroy them.
No, no.
That, that's one the King would remove and replace, cause it's the half round.
Yeah, they would, they would be taking care of that, uh, Sally Port gutter and the existing downspout and doing that.
I know we have some money budgeted for courthouse.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got, got, uh, several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to, I would make a motion to approve the King's estimate for both eighteen hundred and five eighty-three, the total of twenty-three eighty-three.
Does anybody know this King company? Is it?
They're also.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they've done a few projects.
They have?
Yeah.
Yeah, you said that he worked on a couple different buildings, uh, for county, so.
Okay.
That's the thing where I saw their sign at.
I know.
I've walked around the square here or something.
Did they do the Legion?
They might have, they did. He's, he, he drives a van that's got King's construction on the side of it.
Is he in it?
Pretty present around the square.
Okay, okay. Sounds like it's a good local guy, so that's what we like.
Yeah.
Alright, and I'll suck at that.
Twenty-three eighty-three.
For twenty-three eighty-three.
Now.
Now, if we wanna, and, and, something to look at though, uh, discussion, I guess we're gonna move to the second, um. If, if this is something that we're gonna have to start doing every year, we may have to just plan and budget for it to do, you're gonna fix them, re-gutter it, spend the twenty grand and re-gutter it.
Okay.
In the end.
Yeah, okay.
I think this is gonna buy for a year or two, but we need to start.
Money wrapped up and down to replace the whole thing?
Yeah.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, I will say, the only thing that comes into play with that is these are eight inch gutters and, uh, from two different people, one was from this, uh, Scott and then I can't remember the other company, they gave us a nine grand estimate on just a resealing. You can't get eight inch gutters, that's a custom-made gutter, so, and they thought that they, they made them that long because we've only got downspouts in the corner, so it's a big run that they wanted them to move the water to. Now, um, this Horton gentleman thought that seven inch guttering would be able to handle that and still be able to keep the corner down.
More downspouts.
Yeah, so we're not gonna be able to get eight inch.
That's okay.
What would they have, when they, when they break it like, make a break in the middle?
Either break in the middle, yeah.
Run with the down spout and back to one corner. Yeah, but if ever come to. We could probably have them do it however we'd like to have it done.
I'd rather do a seamless, then you don't ever have to have.
Oh, seamless.
Yes, then no more coming back and fixing the thing.
I, I'm just putting that out there, that eight inch on there gives, unless we wanna have it custom made again.
That's her problem, it's the seams.
The price of that, just got your seams in the corners and then that's. Yeah, they all have to do it right on the corners.
Yes, sir.
Every twenty years, so, um, yeah, we're looking at in the spring, start getting some regular eyes.
Look at that.
Yeah.
So if we're going through your budget here, December, January.
Yeah.
Check that out. Food for thought. You're not gonna need that a lot.
We're gonna fix the seam. We're gonna fix this.
I hope this is the last time you're mowing, so.
Well, no, I wanna get more of those leaves up. The leaves are getting taken by, uh, a group that's got a garlic farm.
Yes.
So we took some out to Jared's place and he put them in a burn pile and covered them that way and now this place has come up and they're taking all the leaves we can get them.
Yep.
They wanna compost it?
Yeah. And put it all over.
Even, even Mr., uh, Patrick.
Yeah.
He tells me, he says, I know, and he says, but, says I'm not gonna, he uses it all around exactly, free handy to garden and stuff.
We just talked to him about that this morning, cause those guys noticed the bags of leaves in the structure, they wanna know if they could get those.
Steve, you should sell them.
If I'm getting rid of them for free, why wouldn't I do that?
Think of the money you can give to the county.
Give to the county? I see what we're doing.
See where I'm going?
Yeah.
Hey, so if we're going to reseam these gutters, then we aren't gonna talk about putting, replacing new ones, right?
Not right now, no.
Okay, the price of two thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars for gutter repair for the courthouse, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oath? Thing, the only question is, is how fast they get out here.
Exactly.
And if anything, if I.
Well, at least I know this is the side.
Right, well, we're supposed to get snow actually too.
Steve.
I think so.
You are really talking bad.
No, no, Richard, I, trust me.
Do you want snow?
I do not. Can I ask you a question though?
Yes.
I met with Elizabeth Richardson yesterday, she said that at the, uh, veterans' affairs office, she said that the corner of their building, one of the gutters is leaking and it creates an ice slick when it's freezing, you know, and I guess I'm asking you as too, who do we talk to about that?
Why haven't you looked at it? Kings.
So I don't, yeah, I don't know if I, we just need to call and.
Yeah, they, 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 I'm sorry, I've tried conveying and conveying to the three ladies down there. This is your building, you have something wrong with it, you bring it to the board, uh, either our board or their board and.
What is that, since you're here, I just ask, cause I didn't know the proper procedure and I know since we're talking about gutters, my little perfect segue.
And if it's, if it's a few hundred dollars, just come to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll see, you can watch them run down there and take a look.
Yeah, but I get eleven anyway, like five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think it's, at least take a look and then let us know.
Five hundred, five hundred, just.
Throw it on there.
Yeah.
They like to have somebody who does work.
Well, that's true, yeah, well, yeah, but the, they're worried about that, if it's creating an ice slick when it's dripping down through that.
They've got new concrete, they got new sidewalks now.
Yeah.
Curious to do, so.
If, if these guys don't wanna do that, okay, um, we get ice melt from, we, one would keep.
Okay.
Um, and that's not, they'll, they'll have.
Works pretty well.
Power goes out.
Yeah, it may be they can use that.
Still working, and something gets figured out.
Yeah.
And we've already got a count with them, so I can charge it.
Okay, I'd love to know if that guy's willing to go, take a look at it?
I'll be calling them here, we're done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Alright.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Or have Elizabeth look at the other gutter people that Steve's got?
Yeah.
Maybe a fat little job.
Yeah.
You're gonna be welcome, actually.
He might as well, just do it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Uh, I see you haven't eaten a donut yet, so you gotta get going.
I will start eating, uh, I didn't wanna eat them like cameras, I don't think. I will be grabbing.
You're supposed to do adjourn, is that where we're at?
I think so.
Are you making the motion?
I would do that.
I would do that at nine fifty-five.
Let her do it. Give her the glory.
Let her have it? But I, I, I show it.
I meant to say I second it.
I show it's nine fifty-six though, so.
Oh.
You're probably cool. Uh, I've got a motion made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oath? Motion carried.
Did the boys win on Saturday?
They did, it was a